Catherine, I'll go ahead and give it over to you.
Thank you. So I think we're just reading on council member Francis or Mayor Protag Francis.
Okay.
This is Catherine speaking. Just wanted to let you know we are live, but we are also waiting on Mayor Protag Francis.
Okay. Okay, we'll give her about another minute or so. Okay, I just tried contacting her, leaving her a message. So we do have enough to make quorum. Let's go ahead and get started and hopefully she'll just kind of join in with us here. Okay, everybody all set? We have our phones on mute? And Catherine, you said we are live, correct?
Yes, correctly, we are live.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're ready to begin tonight's Gardena City Council's special meeting for Tuesday, August 30th, 2022. Tonight's meeting, let me just read this disclaimer right here. In order to minimize the spread of the COVID-19 virus, Governor Newsom has signed AB 361. Please be advised that the council chambers are close to the public and that some or all of the Gardena City Council members may be attending this meeting telephonically. If you would like to participate in the meeting, you can participate via the following options. The first way is to view the meeting live online at youtube.com/cityofgardena. The second way to participate prior to the meeting is by emailing the deputy city clerk at publiccomments@cityofgardena.org by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting and write "public comments" in the subject line. The third way to participate during the meeting is via the Zoom webinar. The telephone number is area code 669-900-9128 and the meeting ID number is 816-5569-3665. You can press the number nine for the raise your hand feature and hit the number six to unmute when prompted to. If you wish to speak live on a specific agenda item during the meeting, you may use the raise your hand feature during the item you wish to speak on. Members of the public wishing to address the city council will be given three minutes to speak. And... Okay, so we're ready to go ahead and begin. Madam City Clerk, do you mind doing the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Serta.
Here.
Mayor Prochem Francis is not present currently and she has been messaged.
Okay.
Turn my end to, we're waiting to hear from her. Councilmember Henderson. Councilmember Tanaka.
Here.
Councilmember Love.
Here.
Okay. Okay, so we have a public comment period. Madam City Clerk, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak? On any items that are not already on the agenda?
Madam Mayor, because this is a special meeting tonight, the members of the public are limited to only the items that are on the agenda. So I would recommend that we wait until we are at each item since we have three items on the agenda tonight. We don't have regular oral communication tonight.
Okay, got it. Okay, so let's move on to item number 3A, Mr. City Manager. Do we lose him?
Mayor Serta, I apologize. One second, please.
Okay.
Mayor Serta, I'm having technical difficulty on my, on my end as far as getting the agendas out.
Give me just one second. Clint, would you like me to just go ahead and read it or do you want us to wait on you?
My apologies, Madam Mayor.
No worries. Would you like for me to go ahead and read it or do you have it up now?
Have it up now.
Okay.
Item 3A is a resolution number 6602, making the legally required findings through reauthorize the use of teleconferencing and according to Assembly Bill 361 for meetings of the Gardena City Council and other commissions, committees, and boards subject to state open meeting laws. What is required is to adopt resolution number 6602.
Okay. Does any member of the council have any questions or comments at this time? No? If not, can I get a motion to approve? Adopt resolution number 6602. This is a motion by Councilmember Tanaka and the second by Councilmember Henderson. Madam City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember, sorry. Councilmember Love.
Yes.
Mayor Serta.
Yes. Okay, next up is item number 4A, Presentation for the Proposed Development at 14600 Southwestern. Mr. City Manager, would you like to start off first or should I just go ahead and hand it over to Amanda?
Madam Mayor, we can, we can have Amanda start it off. This is a proposed, again, you said, proposed development for 14600 Southwestern Avenue.
Okay.
Hi, yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yes, as City Manager Osorio stated, tonight's study session portion of the meeting is being held to discuss two sites within the city. The first, under item 4A, is for the property located at 14600 Southwestern Avenue. It's a approximately 1.2 acre lot located on the, what is it, the southeast corner of Western and 146th Street. So south of Rosecrans Avenue. And we have the developers of Seiko Corporation here to provide the, the council a presentation at this time. So I'm going to go ahead and unmute the, let me promote. So Fred, whenever you're ready, you can feel free to share your screen. Or if you have any difficulties, let me know. I can always share mine as well.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I seem to have lost my audio with you.
Can you hear us now? No. Fred, can you hear us now? Yeah.
He's frozen.
Yeah, okay. So let me go ahead and move you back. Maybe you... Or if you turn off your video, I think you may have better connection. Can we?
Do we want to take up item number 4B first and then maybe see if Mr. Schaefer can get his audio?
It's the same developer.
It's the same developer, Madam Mayor.
Oh, okay.
I believe he's reconnecting at this time. I can...
Okay, we'll just wait then.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I believe we have the other representative in the developer's side, Steve Ludwig.
Yes, hi. Good evening, everybody. This is Stephen Ludwig. How was everyone tonight?
Good, thank you. We were able to hear you. Would you like me to display the presentation?
That would be fantastic. Yes, please.
Okay, one moment. Let me go ahead and do that.
I apologize for Fred's technical difficulties tonight. Hopefully he'll be dialing back in here shortly. But tonight, we're here to, we could, our developments are a partnership between my firm, Next Gen Apartments, and Seiko Investment Corporation that is spearheaded by Fred Schaefer, who will be joining us hopefully shortly. Can we go to the next slide, please? So just a quick background on the development team, Seiko Investment Corp. Fred and his team have over 20 years of experience developing multifamily and townhomes throughout the greater Los Angeles area. He is a, personally a resident of the South Bay. He focuses on infill development projects. You know, he's done several dozen projects with a total value of over a billion dollars, all very successful, well-designed projects. And he not only lives here in the South Bay, but has also office locally out of El Segundo. I am one of three founding principals of Next Gen Apartments. We have been operated and founded out of the South Bay since 2003. We have an extensive track record of well over a billion dollars of residential and industrial developments. We are a family of companies, including investment, property management, general contracting, building materials, and lending as well. We actually own two companies located in the great city of Gardena. If we can go to the next slide, please. We, one of our companies is Tesoro Products. It's a manufacturer and distributor of luxury building materials. And then the other firm is Turnaround Solutions, which is a California Class B general contractor that focuses on multifamily and some commercial renovations. Between the two firms, we house about 50 employees in Gardena. Next slide, please. So currently, right now, in our development pipeline in the city of Gardena, we're looking at three projects, working on three projects. One of them is on 16911 South Normandy Avenue, which is about 5 and a quarter acres and consisting of a little over 300 apartments and 75 three-story townhomes built to rent. And then obviously, we're here to talk about 14600 Southwestern Avenue and 2315 Marine Avenue as well. But you can see on the map, the star represents our facility, out of which Tesoro and Turnaround Solutions are our headquarters, and then the clustering of the other three projects as well. Next slide, please. When we get to here, I'm really hopeful that Fred will jump in, as this is where we were going to hand the baton off in our presentation. He must be having some serious technical difficulties here that he has not been able to rejoin candidly. And I apologize for this inconvenience. I haven't been able to locate him as well via phone or email. So it seems like there's some true technical glitch here. If, if, if it's okay, I'm just trying to think if maybe the best way to do this is for us to potentially pause from here and go to the next topic on the city's agenda so that Fred can jump in. And I don't want to steal his thunder.
This is the only item that we have on the agenda for tonight.
Gotcha. Yeah, I'm perplexed by this and I apologize for this. This is...
Let me see if we can get Steve on the phone, or sorry, Fred on the phone.
Yeah, we're, everyone, I have Fred. He'll be back on in two minutes as he is restarting his computer. Is it okay if we pause for two minutes while he, while his computer reboots back up? And again, we, we...
Yes, that's fine.
We tremendously apologize for this. But we are, we are real estate developers, not IT professionals. That is fair. Yes, yes, Fred, we are at the point of the presentation with the city where you take over.
Hey, Amanda, this is Wanda. Can you put the screen up that had the two names of the businesses back up for me real quick?
I'm sorry, council member, what was that?
Can you put the screen up that had the two businesses that they own, this thing, Gardena? Can you put that screen back up?
Yes, of course. One second, let me, uh... This one?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, we're located on, on Brighton Avenue, just north of, just north of Rosecrans, right next to the beautiful Republic Waste Facility.
And how's that working out for you?
Delicious.
I think we have Fred on now. He's just connecting his audio. Hopefully we get him up here soon.
So Fred is in, he's talking to Amanda and trying to take control here of the screen.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
So we are on to the next slide, I believe.
Next slide.
There we go. Fred, you're in charge.
I apologize for the technical issues. I'm not quite sure why my computer was freezing every time Amanda made me present her, but hopefully it won't happen again. Okay, so we're here to talk about our proposed development of 14600 Southwestern Avenue at the corner of 146th Street and Western Avenue. And just by way of reference, the slide or the aerial map on the right of the city shows this project in relation to our Normandy project in lower right, number one, and the Marine Avenue project that we're proposing, which we'll talk about later in the evening. Want to go to the next slide, please? So these two photos are photos of the existing aerial and bird's eye view of the existing site. We acquired the site from somebody that had been there for more than a generation. I think it's already been referenced. The site encompassed gross basis 1.25 acres, on a net basis, about 1.1 acres. Go on to the next slide, please. Pictures of the existing conditions of the building. I'm sure everyone's familiar with the building. It's driven by this beautiful purple building that exists there today and their adjacent stockyard. Go on to the next slide, please. So this is now a rendering of what we're proposing on the property. It is a eight-story design building, similar in size and scale to the project approved at 12850 Crenshaw Boulevard with the Development Group Dinnerstein last year. And this site is somewhat similar in size and shape to, to that location. We're proposing retail on the corner of 146th Street and Western Ave. So now on this page, you can see the, in plan view, on the right, the larger plan is our ground floor plan. On the left is our B1 subterranean basement parking plan. Again, the total site is 1.25 acres. We do have a 10-foot dedication requirement on Western Avenue and a seven-foot dedication requirement on 146th Street. Both of those are taken into account in our design drawings. So, you know, depending on whether the city wants to be widened or just the sidewalk widened and the dedication maintained, we'll be providing that on, in our proposed project. As indicated here, we're proposing 212 unit mixed-use building, 3,000 square feet of retail on the ground floor. A restaurant use was suggested, and that's something we would love to do if we can find the appropriate tenant. Three total levels of parking, including one subterranean levels and six units of, six levels of residential units above. A total of 263 parking stalls, equal to one stall per bedroom, and parking access from the lower end of the site along Western and also on 146th Street. Lastly, a total of almost 15,000 square feet of indoor and outdoor amenity space, as we'll see as we go through the rest of the proposed site plan. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So the project proposes a significant number of new housing units for Gardena residents. The dense, overall density of the project is about 170 units per acre. A total, as I said, of 212 units in just over an acre, 1.25 acres. We propose to provide 5% of the units as low-income affordable units at the 80% of AMI level. That would be a total of 11 units in this project. And we've designed the project with a range of unit sizes with commensurate rents. So you see from the plans on the right, the small A1 units are studios in the 500 to 600 square foot range. The B units are one bedrooms from 600 to 750 square feet. And the C units are two bedrooms that range from about 950 to 1150 square feet. The drawing, the larger drawing on the right shows the third floor amenity level on top of the parking. with two courtyards, a courtyard facing to the east and a courtyard facing to the south. Both of those courtyards flanked by interior amenity spaces and then units surrounding the rest of the site. Go on to the next slide, please. This is a rendering looking from the south of the proposed project. Preliminary design rendering. We haven't finished our full design, but giving you an idea of the proposed design and enassing. Next slide, please. Similar view now looking from the north, looking southeast from above 146th Street. Next slide. So this slide and the next slide gives an illustration of some of the amenities that we will have associated with the property consistent with, you know, typical requirements. Both EV parking based on California State Cal Green requirements and providing interior bicycle parking for residents to encourage bicycle use and hopefully minimize car use from the project. Next slide. This gives an illustration of some of the green design and energy mitigation measures that we would incorporate into the project. Drought tolerant landscape, low-flow fixtures and water recycling, potentially integrating solar panels on the roof of the project, high-performance windows, low VOC finishes and materials and high-efficiency filtration systems. Talking a bit about community and benefits to the city. So we see increased economic development in Gardena based on the project. We would propose to have a local, increase local property, property values by virtue of new development in the in the city. Increased safety with activating of the street and adding additional residents in this location. Local hiring and buying programs we would seek to implement in connection with construction and management of the project. And I apologize that I wasn't here earlier. Steve, were you able to talk about the presence of coastline in the Gardena community?
Well, we talked about to solve the turnaround solutions. We're also on our investment side. We own several apartment buildings and obviously industrial buildings in the city of Gardena. So we are, we are an active participant in trying to improve the quality of the housing throughout the city in addition to these proposed projects.
Okay. And lastly, on this slide, again emphasizing that we're proposing to provide affordable units as part of the development. Next slide, please. Additional economic benefits for the city, development fees, obviously for the city of Gardena. Increased revenue from property taxes based on redevelopment of the site, adding substantial value to the property. Additional business license fees from operation of our property, from operation retail space, additional user utility taxes, and we believe increased demand for Gardena community businesses based on the increased occupancy and tenancy of the property. Next, to talk about our requested entitlements. So current zoning of the property is commercial zoning that does not allow for residential use. So we would propose a zone change, general plan amendment, an adoption of a specific plan to allow for development of the project. We would also propose entering into a development agreement, which among other things would memorialize the units to be designated for deed restricted affordable in the project. And then from a CEQA perspective, we propose to undertake a, what's called a Sustainable Communities Environmental Assessment mitigated negative declaration or a SCA MND. So I'm sure you're familiar with the mitigated negative declaration as a level of review for CEQA review. And the, the SCA MND is a relatively recent, from I think 2016 or 17 state law provision that provides for an enhanced MND that is better able to sustain potential challenges from a, from a legal standpoint. That concludes our presentation on 14600 Western proposed development. We are available to answer questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Let me start first off by opening up to the public. Madam Secretary, do we have anybody from the public who has questions at this time?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, does any member of the council have any questions at this time? No?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I want to first thank you for this project. I do see a lot of things that I like. Like the balconies. One of the things that I wanted to start seeing in the development is outdoor space for the individual uses, units. So I'm glad to see that you guys added balconies to the units. I love the mixed use, the local hiring, the bikes and the charging stations. How many units is in this development?
Two, 212 are proposed.
212. And what I didn't see, and I can barely hear the conversation, but what I didn't see was any common outdoor space that I missed that?
There, there is, there are two outdoor spaces on the project. The total community space is, I believe, about 13 and a half thousand square feet throughout the project.
Great.
Two, two separate courtyards, one with a pool, one without, but in total, amenity spaces totaling 13 and a half thousand square feet.
Awesome. Now, last question, is, is there any pet space there?
Sorry, ask the question again, please.
Is there any pet space, any space allotted for?
Size commonly do, and we would endeavor to do that.
That would make me very happy because we have a lot of people, they got dogs and we don't have pet dog parks. So even when we get the dog parks, I would like to have those parks offset by some onsite pet space in the new development. So for right now, that's all of my questions.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else from the council have any questions at this time?
And council member Love and for the rest of the council as well, I just wanted to, you know, I'm sharing my screen to show the information that the developer provided in regards to this site. Are you able to see it? I just want to make sure.
Yes, we are.
Can you go to the one that showed the open space?
Yeah, we don't, I don't see the one with the open space.
There it is.
Okay.
Yeah, so this one showed, yeah, the, the, the upper levels.
Right, that's, that's on the third level above the parking. And then we also have a roof deck on the eighth level. So as Steve mentioned, I think it's 14,500 square feet of total open space indoor and outdoor. The majority of that, you know, is, is outdoor open space.
I think, am I on speaker?
Yes.
Mayor and council member, I think in addition to questions, the purpose of the study session is obviously you're not saying yay or nay to a project that, that is just conceptually on the table. But to give an idea, if you think this is something that they should pursue, if the density is acceptable, if there are other things you'd want to see mixed in. So these are very, very expensive projects to process through the environmental review, through the plans, their designs to bring to the council and planning commission. So before they are well underway, they want to just have a general feeling from the council of their major concerns or, you know, something else that the, the council wants to see that they should be incorporating.
Okay. Go ahead, Mark.
Madam Mayor, I, I do have a couple of questions in regards to traffic. Right there, 147 and Western, there's a lot of speeding going on. I know at some time we had talked about crosswalks. Will we be putting a light there because ingress and egress out of that facility, either on 147 or Western, is going to be kind of a challenge with traffic going north on Western and folks trying to turn out. What we, have we done an environmental impact report on that or?
You know, council member, we're at the, the very, very beginning. And before you can start the studies, you need to get a stable project description. So that's one of the reasons for the, the project, for the study session tonight.
Okay, well, then I'm okay then. Yeah, I'm okay. It's something we should definitely pursue for discussion.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
Let's go Rodney first and we'll go back to you.
Madam Mayor, I, I really appreciate this project. I thank these guys for what they're putting out. And the thing I liked the most is that they looked into the parking and they're gonna have the subterranean parking that will alleviate a lot of the problems on the street. Thanks.
Thank you, council member.
Okay, ask more Love, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just noticed the eight stories. Is that gonna be a good fit for Gardena? We're at five max and this building being eight stories is gonna stand out. And then I'm not real sure if that's what we want everybody else to start to follow suit. So do, are we sure we want to do an eight-story building? Even though one level is subterranean and seven above ground? I am, I'm not real sure about that part. And then my second question is to the developers that if you guys can't find any space to do the onsite dog park, would you guys be willing to help the city with an off-site dog park?
So I think
Go ahead, Steve.
So I was just gonna address the first part about the height. This project was originally considered with respect to the project that the city of Gardena approved at 12850 Crenshaw for Dinnerstein, which was a 265-unit project, eight stories on 1.3 acres. This is 212 units, eight stories on a similar sized lot.
With the subterranean parking.
That's correct. That this, you know, one of the things for this project that we thought would be very important would be to have adequate parking of one space per bed.
I think the difference for me and the two projects is the one over on Crenshaw is on the outskirts, on a much busier street near two major streets. And this one is kind of like in the middle of the city, surrounded by single-story homes. And so for me, this project kind of is set apart from the one over on El Segundo and Crenshaw. So I think, you know, it's still eight stories and in the middle of single-story or two-story apartment buildings is I'm not real sure how the neighbors are gonna feel about that.
So we, we view this as a pretty heavily trafficked corridor, just a couple of blocks south of the intersection of Western and Rosecrans. Very similar to the El Segundo Boulevard and Crenshaw project as, as that project sits, I believe, a block or two south of El Segundo Boulevard. And on the Crenshaw project directly to the east, you have a very dense residential community. And, you know, I would say the surrounding characteristics are similar on this project as well.
Well, I, I also agree with Councilmember Henderson. I would like to see the the impact, the traffic, the impact that, you know, the trap, what the traffic is gonna be like. Because we already have a lot of residential housing and people already leaving and the streets are kind of small over there, very narrow. And so with 200-plus parking spaces, I'm also concerned about the impact of traffic.
So we will be doing a full impact analysis, including traffic study with signal warrant analysis as part of the CEQA. And councilman, council member Love, but to come back to your question about the dog park. I think the answer is yes, we would be willing to either, you know, allocate a space on the project or a, you know, a dog run or else, you know, do make an alternative arrangement through the development agreement or some other mechanism to, you know, provide for one within the city.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Love, I'm a dog owner. I get it. Love my dog. She needs a place to run always.
Yes, I gotta look out for the doggies.
Any other questions or comments? I have a couple. So, and, and this is for our staff here. Eight stories, that is the max per our requirements. Is that correct?
Mayor, this would be a specific plan. So there, you can set the zoning standards to whatever you determine is appropriate for this location, for the height. We will be eventually bringing new development standards to the city council with regard to all the zoning overlays we need to do. We've been working on those standards. Right now in that zone, I believe the height allowed is 65 feet by right in the industrial zone at that location.
Industrial.
Or is there a residential buyer?
Correct.
Residential, okay. It may be lower because of the, of residential being adjacent to it.
Okay, 65?
65 is the highest right now in the city absent the project on Crenshaw and El Segundo Boulevard, which we have this specific plan for. And I believe the project of theirs on Normandy will be higher than, I can't remember the height on that one.
73 and a half feet on that one.
73 and a half?
Yeah.
It should, it should also be, it should also be noted that to the east of this project are private, it's bordered by apartment buildings directly to the east, whereas Crenshaw, you know, for example, that project on the east where it's single-family residences, all residents, but this is multi-family to the east, not, not single-family.
It's kind of a mixture there, actually, east of there. I mean, it's really weird, you know, you'll, you'll see townhomes, condominiums, and you'll see two-story, you'll see a single house. It's kind of all over the place there.
You know what, you, you are accurate. It is, it is kind of a hodgepodge of different types of structures.
Yeah.
Not, not single-family lots.
Yeah, exactly. That's the difference of El Segundo and Crenshaw, where all of those are the same style of single-family units there. So currently you said you guys just recently purchased that property BMW, BN, BMW tile or something like that? You just recently purchased it or?
That's correct. That's correct. Several months ago.
Okay, got it. And who is your potential type of retail that you're looking to put at the bottom portion there?
So, you know, it was suggested that the city doesn't have a lot of good restaurant space. We would love to find a restaurant to occupy that space. If it's not that, you know, we often find other local serving retail establishments, maybe coffee shop, et cetera.
So if you were to go with, let's just say like a restaurant or something, then we'd have to account in for that parking as well. Correct? Okay. And I, I kind of quickly jotted this down. Your two bedrooms, you were looking at 950 square feet to 1100. What were your studios and one bedrooms, the square footage on those?
Studios are about 550 square feet. They range from 500 to 600 square feet.
Okay.
The one bedrooms range from about 625 to 750 square feet. They average about 700 square feet.
Okay.
And the two bedrooms, yeah, 950 to 1150 square feet.
Okay. And, and what are the potential, I mean, I know the rate can change, you know, by the time, you know, something like this is finished being built. But right now at today's rate, what would you be looking at renting these out for?
I think the studios would be, you know, around $2,000.
Okay.
The one bedrooms in the mid $2,000 and the two bedrooms in the low to mid $3,000.
Low to mid what?
$3,000.
Okay. Low to mid. Okay. And then also I saw where you guys had some, some pictures of like drought tolerant, you know, plants and things like that. And projects like, like this here, I mean, if, if you were to choose to move forward, I think it's always really important to have lots of lighting, lots of I think it's always really important to have lots of lighting, lots of, you know, shortbread and so on. And I can see some in this diagram here. Just hopefully maybe you kind of take advantage of maybe something a little bit more, you know, with something like that. And then I also highly encourage it, and I'm sure you're gonna do this with your developers, but definitely make sure reaching out to the community surrounding there, just to kind of get a better feel to for, you know, what some of their comments are on, you know, on a project like this, because it is very different than what's currently there right now in that area. So it looks really nice. I mean, I think at this point anything's better than the pink, or I don't know if they're calling it purple, or if they're calling it pink, that current building there right now. But, you know, it's quite large, you know, I think it will probably end up being almost maybe the tallest one as as right now, if something like this were to move forward on Western, so it stands out. But, you know, it's it's an improvement on what's there right now. So kind of go with that.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Sorry for your for your input. We appreciate it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I do have another question for staff, and this is so that the public can understand. If Lisa can explain, when you asked about the, right now, the city's height stored level number is five, five stories. And she kind of answered that with inches or feet. If she can just make it plain for the people to understand the difference between the sixty five, the standard that we have now is sixty five feet, which is five stories. And it's a seventy three and a half with one subterranean, which would make this eight stories. So is it, can she just say yes or no, or explain?
Our code sets forth the height limit by feet, not by stories. And actually, because this is within fifty feet of an R three zone, the existing zoning right now would be fifty feet in height for that zone. That's, that's probably roughly about four stories. Because people don't build at ten, ten feet anymore. I think once upon a time, your your height limit, your height in an apartment may be ten feet. But I think as times have progressed, developers go with higher ceiling heights.
Right.
Fifty feet would get you more to the four foot level, the four story level. I'm sorry.
So this is almost double the standard for this particular area right now?
Yes, but I do want to point out that this is one of the sites that has been identified to get a housing overlay in it. When we went through the housing element, it's not an identified site in the housing element, but it was shown to get the overlay nevertheless to the O five standard, which is thirty one to fifty dwelling units per acre. And as I said, we are working on the new development standards that will accommodate these highly density units.
You know, one of the, one of the, one of the interesting challenges that's presented to developers now in the City of Gardena, as, you know, obviously everyone's aware, there are housing requirements that, you know, the City of Gardena and every city now are trying to achieve. Simultaneously, industrial space has become the hottest investment in the country. And everybody wants to buy, you know, South Bay, City of Gardena industrial properties, which has driven up the price of all these properties. And so we're not chasing, you know, to be the Empire State Building. There's no ego in terms of wanting to go higher. It's truly being able to match the price that we have to pay to control one of these sites for development with how many units need to be developed in order for the project to be viable. And so it's that balancing act. If we could, you know, do it in one story, we certainly would. But I don't think anybody wants ten square foot units. So it's really, it's it's really both a design and economic balancing act in order to make these projects happen.
And I appreciate that. I love the project. I love that you guys are willing to, you know, do the development agreement and add some extra stuff to it. My biggest concern is when I look at this project versus the one on Crenshaw and El Segundo, they don't compare to me because of the location that it is in the city and looking out for the residents that have been in that community for a while. Even on the opposite side of Western, this building is gonna stand out. It's gonna stand out because it's a new project. We get that. But it's gonna stand out even greater. And I'm not, once we okay this project, then we gotta okay more projects to come in at eight stories. And I'm not real sure if that's the way the city wants to go, if that's okay with the residents. And so I agree with the mayor to really check with the community and the residents in that area. Because whether I live in an apartment or one of the single story homes that's all mixed up over there in that area, and the next thing I know, I have a seven story apartment complex staring down at me. I don't think I'd be that happy. So.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. Well, Mr. Shaffray, hopefully you've been able to kind of gather some notes off of some of the comments that are made here and that can help you decide if you want to move forward or or just kind of what direction you want to go in.
I have been scribbling away furiously and thank you very much for all of your input.
Okay. So we're going to move, sorry, that's my agenda. We're gonna move to the next item here, which is item number four B. But before we do that, we need to, council member Henderson, go ahead.
Well, say, Madam Mayor, regardless of item four B, I need to recuse myself because of close proximity to my personal residence.
Okay.
And so I guess staff move me over to an attendee.
Okay.
All right.
All right. So let staff do that. And Amanda, you can go ahead and read off item number four B.
Yes, Madam Mayor. So item four B is in regards to potential development for the the site located at twenty three fifteen Marine Avenue. The site is approximately one point six acre that that consists of about four properties. It's located on the north side of Marine, just west of Van Ness Avenue. And the the same developers for the first item are going to be giving a presentation on this site as well. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen again. And Steve and Fred, I'll let you take it over. Just let me know when you'd like to have me move the slides.
Do you want to lead up?
Fred, why don't you, well, sure, I'll start. This is Steve again. So this site is interesting and I'm sure many of you know it. It's it's something that I think has been informed the city for quite a while. We have been working for quite a while to try to control this site and currently have it in escrow to purchase along with the red barn that is on the north side of the site adjacent to the park. And so, again, we're going to present to you a development concept, which, which we think would be attractive and accretive to the City of Gardena, as well as, again, in the balancing act with the the cost to to build and make a project work. So with that, Fred, you, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thanks. Go ahead and go on to the next page. Thank you. So we're talking about the site at Marine and Spinning Avenue, which is bisected currently by Daphne or Nader Place. And on the east side encompasses the abandoned hospital, twenty three fifteen Marine. And on the west side of Nader Place is a currently a parking, parking lot. Go on to the next slide, please. So again, as Steve said, we understand you're all familiar with the abandoned hospital. It's been here for some time. There's a agreement in place with the current owner of the property to demolish the this this building, which has been quite an eyesore in the city for some time. Go on to the next slide. And the next one. So we propose a project slightly smaller in scale than the last project we looked at on Western and one hundred and forty seven street. This is proposed as a seven story building rather than an eight story building. Go on to the next slide. I want to highlight the, actually, one more, please.
Well, I, and I just, and I just like to, I just like to interject here that, you know, as we obviously have two projects that are very quickly comparable, you know, this site currently, as Fred had alluded to, the current hospital or vacant hospital is an eyesore. It's blighted. It's had homeless issues. You know, it really is an eyesore that is sticking out right now. And so as we address the density in the project that we're looking at here, there's obviously, you know, a desire to truly upgrade the quality of the real estate and infrastructure on the street versus what's currently there today, which, you know, has been problematic because, again, most of you probably already know for the City of Gardena.
And I'm sorry, Amanda, I want to go back, I think it's five pages. I want to illustrate what the site is today versus what we're planning to do or proposing to do with respect to Nader Place. Yeah, if you can go back the other way, keep going. One more, one more. There you go. Okay. So again, on the left, picture on the left here indicates the hospital on the right. And then behind the hospital is the J and D Events Center. We also have that property in escrow. And then the Nader Place bisects the property, but is a cul-de-sac that ends at the park to the north. And then the parking lot to the west, we're also in escrow on. And so what we have proposed to planning staff and would would propose to city council, from our perspective, what makes the most sense to to try to develop is to create a single contiguous parcel, rather than the way it's structured now, where there's Nader Place that bisects the two parcels. And so we propose, now if you go forward, back four or five slides to our site plan, Amanda. Yeah, so what we would propose is to vacate Nader Place as it exists today. And in in place of that, install a similar width lane at the rear of our site coming off of Spinning Avenue, which would serve both as a fire lane and a separation from the single family homes to the north. And in consideration for vacating and allowing us to incorporate what is currently Nader Place into our property and into our project, we would, we propose essentially a land swap with the city that we would deed to the city, the J and D Events space, the lot in the rear, which is now adjacent to the existing park. And the city would have the opportunity to make that part of the the park complex. So we think this is a win win for the city and for us as a, as a development matter, that by doing this, we could, you know, you could, we can expand the local park and create a a single unified property to create a a single development on it. And then lastly, we understand there's some history to the Nader family and designation of this as Nader Place. We would propose to rename the rear fire lane Nader Place. So now with that understanding, let me just walk through the particulars of the project. So as was described, a one point six acre site, that's what the site is as reconfigured as shown here, including Nader Place, not including the J and D barn to the rear. And on this one point six acres, we're proposing a two hundred and thirty nine unit mixed use project that would have about forty two hundred square feet of retail at the intersection of Spinning and Marine Avenue. It's a similar mix of studio, one and two bedroom apartments. I apologize, it says here eight stories. That's not true. It's it's, we're proposing a seven story with two levels of above grade parking. We would capture a total of just under three hundred parking stalls, one per bedroom in the two levels. We would create parking egress, as you can see, along Spinning Avenue on the upper right and along Marine Avenue in the lower left, the bottom ground floor plan. And this project encompasses eighteen thousand feet of indoor and outdoor amenity space. Slightly more units than the what we proposed on the Western project and slightly more indoor and outdoor amenity space. Go on to the next slide, please. The density for this project is lower than what we proposed on the fourteen six hundred Western. It's a hundred and forty four dwelling units per acre. We would also propose to provide five percent of the units to be restricted low income units at the eighty percent of AMI level. And again, we provide a similar mix of of units in terms of studio through two bedroom. Next, please. This is a rendering of the proposed project looking to the east from along Marine Avenue, the adjacent strip shopping mall, which, by the way, one of the hurdles that we're addressing in our diligence is that there was a dry cleaner operating there for many years. I understand they closed a number of years ago, but their, their site is contaminated with some dry cleaning fluid. And that contamination has migrated to the parking area immediately adjacent to our property. It hasn't migrated all the way across to the hospital site, nonetheless, is something that we'll have to deal with as we go forward. Next slide, please. This is looking from the other direction, looking west. You see Nader's furniture in the foreground and our proposed building adjacent to it. Actually, I'm sorry, if you can back up to the the floor plans, I wanted to point one more thing out. So on the upper floor there shows the seventh floor. We did deck, and we, similar to what we proposed on our other projects, create a roof deck. And we strategically located the roof deck adjacent to the homes to the west to bring down the scale of the building in the in the northwest corner. So I wanted to point that out. All right, going forward, back to the the E V page. So similar to the other project, we'll meet the same green and energy conservation requirements, have bike parking for the tenants, try to minimize auto use. Next page. Similar drought tolerant in fixtures and amenities in the project to minimize energy use. And also, you know, we see similar benefits to the community of this project to the other projects. Economic development, increased property values, obviously upgrading what's on the site now, increasing safety, decreasing blight. We're committed to local hiring and providing low income affordable units. Again, substantial development fees to the city for a project of this magnitude, increased property taxes, additional business license fees, utility fees, and increased demand and customers to existing Gardena community businesses. So the entitlements requested on this site are similar to the 14600 project in that current zoning would need to be amended with a zone change, general plan amendment, adoption of a specific plan to allow for the project. We would propose a development agreement to, among other things, provide for the low-income affordable units. In addition to that, we also propose, as I described, closing off the existing Nader Place and effectively relocating it to the rear of the property coming off of Spinning Avenue in order to create a single unified parcel for the development. And again, we've gone into escrow on the J and D Event Hall behind the hospital, which borders on the the park, and so we would propose a land swap with the city whereby the city would take title to the property J and D Event Hall, incorporate that into the park, and we would take title to the cul-de-sac existing Nader Place in order to create a unified development site. And lastly, regarding CEQA, as with 14600 Western, it would be a mitigated negative declaration of SCIA M and D for purpose of addressing environmental issues.
Okay, um, let me start real quick with Mina. Do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item? I'm sorry, you're muted?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I need to.
I'm sorry, you're still muted?
Sorry, I'm, I need to. I do not see any raised hands. Madam City Clerk, there are raised hands. I'm having trouble with my screen.
I can help. So I see that there are three members of the public wishing to speak at this time.
Okay, let's put the timer up, if we can put our first speaker up.
Catherine, did you want me to put up the timer and to allow them to speak?
Just give me one moment.
Okay.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, you can go ahead.
Because this impacts me personally, I think this is is a project that the city should consider. I have some questions in regards to the.
Mr. Henderson, sorry, go ahead, the timer's been started now.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. I just had some questions in regards to the land swap. How would that potentially be incorporated in the park coming off the new proposed Nader Nader Place Lane or whatever you call it? Would it be a smaller parking lot or a handball court, or what would that be turned into? But because I'm personally impacted by this project, I would like to see if the city chooses to go forward, what the impact of traffic would be on Spinning and Marine and to the surrounding businesses in that area. Because Marine is a mini-major thoroughfare through the city of Gardena, there would be some concerns, and to make sure that the impact to my neighbors on Spinning, that they are also consulted in this project. But how would the land swap piece work? I'm curious to know about that. Thank you.
This is Fred. Lisa, do you want me to address that?
You can address that.
So, you know, we haven't gone into specifics from a legal matter, you know, as a conceptual matter, we are, what we envision is that we would go through a vacation process of the cul-de-sac street, so that it would no longer be a street, and we would be able to take title to that property. And in consideration for that, we're proposing that the city would take title to the J and D Events Hall property. They're similar-sized properties, both in the range of about 5,500 square feet, I believe. And, you know, it it's our belief that that would be mutually beneficial, because the combination of the J and D Events Hall space being in the hands of the city along with the new Nader Place slash Fire Lane at the rear of the site would maintain the same access to that rear space that exists today through the cul-de-sac and would allow the city any number of possible ways to enhance the use of the park with the property at J and D Events Hall.
Currently, I believe that Dance Hall is being used for, sorry, the the Events Hall is being used for dance lessons.
Okay. Okay, um, let's go back to our public comments, the next speaker. Okay, Mr. Derek Mallon, you can go ahead.
Yes, okay, hi, I'm Derek Mallon, I'm the resident on the north side, Friday Jason is a vacant hospital. So we're, we're pretty excited for for this new development as it will aesthetically make the residential area look better. The only concern is right now we have a wall intersecting the vacant hospital or this new project between us and our residents because we're the neighbor adjacent to it. Our concern is, since it will be about eight stories, is there plans on building the wall adjacent to us higher? So we have privacy in our in our backyard, because if there's windows on the north side of this project, basically, all those windows are just going to be staring right into the backyard. So I was wondering if there's any plan for building a higher wall, or maybe there's no windows on the north side on the seventh and eighth floor? It's just out of curiosity.
Okay, we'll, we'll ask the developer that, but did you have any other questions while your time is still going?
Other questions is, do you have any other questions other than that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question, please, Mr. Mallon?
Oh, I was talking to my father, he's here with me, I was asking if he had any questions. It was just, it was just that question about if there's going to be a wall or anything.
Okay. Okay, so, um, that's just a question as far as would the wall be any higher? Because the project is supposed to be much taller now, you know, like seven, I'm a seven-story.
Yeah, I mean, I think, Mr. Mallon, first of all, we really appreciate you taking the time to call in and share your thoughts, obviously, as a direct neighbor to this project. Your input is very much appreciated. I think that, again, we're very early in this process, and our goal is certainly to take into consideration all the neighbors, especially yours, into our design and planning for this project. It's certainly something that, you know, we'd love to be communicating with you throughout this project process to ensure that the project that gets built is something that you're happy with, that we're happy with, and candidly, the entire community. So that's, that's certainly our goal, and again, we hope to keep lines of communication and dialogue open with you throughout the entire process.
Okay, the next question, I think we have three people, if I'm not mistaken, a third person?
Hello?
Okay, hi, Mr. Rich, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, I live in town, might as well voice my support for these developments, all the buildings that they're talking about building at, you know, they're they're eyesores. It's really good to see somebody want to come into town and, you know, make Gardena, you know, as beautiful as its name, really. And, yeah, like, I just wanted to voice my full-hearted support, and it's good to see this kind of development coming into town.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. Rich, we appreciate your commentary, and I just, I also want to reiterate, you know, we're, we're, we're in town, we've been there for a while, we're, we're local, we own and operate two businesses with over 50 employees located in Gardena. I think I personally have probably set the most, the record for who has eaten the most in a period of 12 months, Trace de Asadas, possibly the best barilla I have ever had in my life. And we have spread that word to, you know, our, our business associates who come in, our investors who come in from New York and San Francisco. We constantly take everybody to all the great restaurants throughout Gardena as we're promoting what a great city it is, and we look to continue that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, this is Fred, I just wanted to add one more comment regarding the rear adjacency.
Okay.
Is in addition to a wall, which we would certainly be open to, you know, extending the height of, we would also plan, you know, some planting along that rear area and would plant, you know, could plant mature trees, and that would go a long way towards, you know, obscuring the, how how our building looks into the adjacent property. So we're, you know, very open to, you know, working with the neighbors in that regard.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that's all of our public speakers, is that correct? Yes?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay, let me open it up to council. Does any member of the council have any questions at this time?
Yes, it's me again.
Go ahead.
And Steve, I love your projects, and I think they are very needed in the city, and it will really start to take us to another level. But again, my only challenge is the height, and is there a reason why this one doesn't have one story or one level of sub-parking?
So because we're a little less dense in this project, the subterranean parking wasn't needed. If you recall, the on Western, we're proposing about 170 units per acre, and on this one, because Gardena, or sorry, because Marine is not as large of a street, we were guided by staff that something smaller may be appropriate, and so we were proposing 140 units per acre here.
But if you did subterranean parking on this site, if it's possible, it will reduce the the height of the the building, which will reduce the privacy issue that a lot of the, that area is single-story homes, not mixed-use with apartments. And so it would reduce the privacy concern that a lot of the residents are going to have.
So we could, we could consider subterranean here to reduce the building height. Another concern and consideration from our perspective is the contaminated soil that we referenced, and having to go subterranean wouldn't necessarily mean getting involved with that, which could be problematic, but it's something we could look into.
Okay. And I, I'm having a hard time hearing, that's why you see me kind of leaning into the screen, the the Nader's Place versus the hall, did I hear you say that you guys would would remodel or build a hall and then the city would have access to it, or the city, it would become cities? Community hall?
Yeah, our proposal would be that it would become city property.
Okay, so the city would get in exchange a new community center over at that park area in exchange for the cul-de-sac?
Correct.
So what would be the entrance, what would be the other entrance into that park, that particular park over there?
Yeah, the side of the street.
So Amanda, you want to show the site plan again? So if you see in the rear, that green sort of dashed area says Fire Lane? So that it would be a 30-foot wide drive aisle, similar width to what Nader Place is now, and it goes all the way back to the what's now the end of Nader Place, it goes up to J and D Hall. So that piece of Nader's Place to the north remains, right, where that shows.
Got it.
So it's just a different, it's different, a different egress point off of Spinning rather than off of Marine.
Okay. And last thing is the dog park.
There you go, we've got our dog park.
You got it? Okay, great. We don't need to talk about that. Yeah, other than that, I love the projects, I I love the project. It's just the height and the lack of privacy that residents are gonna have to deal with. Maybe you guys can provide some, some of those sunscreen things that you stretch across the backyards.
Yeah, I think with landscaping and other things, we can deal with some of those concerns.
Great.
Does any member of the council have any questions or comments?
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead.
I, you know, I've been a member of this city for a long time, and thank God, you're, you're, you're going to put a great project up at this blighted site. The one thing I worry about is a little bit about the density in that area. The project brings a lot of, a lot more resonance, traffic and stuff. So I guess density in that area would be just a little bit of of my issue, but I I love the project, I love that you're bringing something to that area. So if we can look at the density portion of that, I I would appreciate you just kind of taking a look at that.
Okay.
Very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. For myself, that is probably one of my bigger concerns in that particular area there, because the street is busy, kind of slow, it's a little bit of both when you go down that street, if that even makes sense, busy and slow. But that area is a little different than the other area. It's more single-family homes there, these are homeowners there versus the other one, these are landlords who, the other project was landlords who built for tenants, and a lot of times tenants are kind of, you know, they're in and out. So it's a whole different kind of deal when you're dealing this with property owners, people who who, you know, who invested a little bit more in the community, and they're living there. So I know the city usually puts out, I noticed a community survey, so I just hope you guys maybe, I know how much you're only required to do, but this is, this project here, it's, like Councilmember Tanaka said, it it is pretty dense, so that's kind of my concern there. I love the color of it, that that neutral color, I think, is really nice. It looks really great on, you know, to fit Marine right there, and it is an improvement from what's there now, because, you know, I think we all know, you know, that property's been blighted for a really long time, and I'm always really concerned it's going to turn into a crime scene one day because just the nature of, it's a vacant lot there and trends are occurring there all the time. So, yeah, that's probably my biggest, my biggest concern with that prop, with that project there. And same thing with the pricing there, are we looking at similar amounts as far as what the rents would be similar to the project on Western, or?
Yes, I think it would be similar.
Similar amounts, okay. And then retail in that area there as well, what are you potentially looking for there? Same thing, restaurants, or?
Yeah, I think we have.
Grocery shop room?
Yeah, so I think, and I think, you know, we would talk with local brokers, find out, you know, what kinds of tenants are looking to come into the area.
Okay.
We're certainly open to, you know, the kinds of tenants that we can attract, and want it to be something that the neighbors would appreciate and our tenants would appreciate.
Okay, can we pull the project back up just for a moment here? Just a couple of things I just want to kind of point out. I think the other, there's another image of, I think, a street view, not that one. That one, or I think there's another, I, I, yeah, that one. I mean, I love the shrubbery in the front there. One thing that's always really important to me is a lot of lighting, white lighting, a lot of, you know, good shrubbery there, I think that makes a really big difference in projects like these here, because it is a large building, and I think that would make a really big difference, plus it just does, it makes a big difference. The parking area where where cars would come in and out of, would that be on Marine, or would that be on the side streets there? I I apologize, I kind of missed that part.
Yeah, we're proposing both, one on Marine at the far end and one on Spinning.
When you say on the far end, are you talking closer to Van Ness?
To the west. To the west.
Oh, to the west of that?
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. All right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
One last thing, I apologize, I have another meeting I'm late for, but I love this project, but there's one, one more question. Mr. Safer, does this project bring in more affordable housing than the one on Western? Mr. Safer, does this project bring in more affordable housing than the one on Western?
In terms of numbers, yes, so with the higher unit count, we would be proposing a total of 14 affordable units on this property.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if Councilman Tanaka leaves, we're going to lose quorum.
Oh, that's all right.
I'll stay.
Is it 12, is it 14 or 12? Because.
I'm sorry, you're right. 240 divided by point oh five is 12, not 14, a mistake.
Will there be a traffic impact study on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, are there any more questions or comments?
The only comment, the only comment that I can make is the only reason we actually want to go through this entire project. This really is a fact that we've heard that some people in city council have lost a few of their dance moves. We want to donate the dance hall so that everyone can up their game for their upcoming parties.
Oh, the, the Nader's Barn?
That's right.
Okay, gotcha.
I really like the fact that you guys are doing that because we're bringing in a lot more residents into the community and we're going to need more community halls and centers at our parks. And so that's, that's a plus, so.
Thank you, and thank you everyone for your time and your commentary and insight. And again, we just want to reiterate that not only through the development project, through our local businesses, you know, we are proud to be in the city of Gardena and we want to be a big part of continuing, you know, the, the growth of the city and doing our part to ensure that it's in the proper direction and everybody's enjoying and on board with what we're doing.
Okay.
Mayor, I have one last question. Have you guys talked to the other businesses on marine about the project? Like the Nader's and the other businesses on marine?
As a matter of fact, I have been in touch with the Nader family. So I randomly play on a lacrosse team with one of the Nader's. And so we've been in routine communication about this project. It's a small world, I don't know how that happens. But on the others, on the west side, we have yet to communicate with the dry cleaning business, the former dry cleaning business.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Greg has a question.
Oh, please, go ahead.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there was a couple of comments about the desire for a lesser density. Is there any sort of a number or direction you wanted to give on that to the developer?
And did dens, lower density mean lower height? So they understand that, we want to make sure they have a clear understanding of what the council wants. We don't want to, if the council's using density as a term for height, we don't want them to come back with a seven story project.
I see.
Right. I'm not looking at height, I'm just looking at numbers.
Okay.
And how that impacts the residents and the traffic on marine and, and what, what, and I know you guys, this is just preliminary, but I know you're going to talk to the residents. But it's not about height, but it is about the numbers.
Okay. I'm looking at a little bit of both, density as well as height. Maybe if you came down, we, we lost one level there. I know there's a formula to it that you guys normally do. And, you know, so that's just for myself.
Height is a concern for my, me as well, that's why I asked about the subterranean parking. Maybe if you drop the parking down one level, then you can keep your seven stories. But seven stories above brown, I, I think the height is an issue. Even more so in this project.
That helps, thank you, I think that helps the developer.
Okay. All right, are there any more questions or comments anybody has?
Great projects.
Okay, good.
You very much.
Steve, Fred, thank you guys very much as well. So we're going to end this portion here of the presentation. I'm going to move on to item number five, which is the adjournment. So the Gardena City Council adjourned to the closed session portion of the city council meeting at 7:00 PM, followed by the regular city council meeting at 7:30 PM on Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. So at this time, we are adjourned. All right, thank you, guys.
All right, guys, gotta go.
Thanks, guys.
Gotta go.